To call the meeting to order, please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Howard, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Amadis?
Here.
Mrs. Buckley?
Here.
Mrs. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Puhat?
Here.
Mr. Rose?
Here.
Mrs. Rule?
Here.
Mr. Schubel?
Present.
Mr. Spukuzo?
Here.
Mr. Sessi?
Here.
All nine members are present this evening.
Thank you. Tonight, it is our honor and pleasure to be able to dedicate the community room in memory of our former superintendent, Dr. Thomas A. Knight. As you are all aware, Dr. Knight passed away in July after a brave battle with esophageal cancer, and his absence has left a huge void in our school district. His influence on this district was far-reaching, but probably no place more so than the room we are sitting in this evening. It only seems fitting that this room be renamed in his memory. Dr. Knight was hired by the Bethel Park Board of School Directors on December 13th, 2005, at a time when this district was set back on its heels. And looking back on that day, Dr. Knight was definitely the right superintendent for this district. At the time of his hiring, the district was recovering from a financial shortfall, as well as several administrative vacancies. But neither of those issues deterred Dr. Knight from wanting to lead the Bethel Park School District. Doc always said he felt so honored to work here and serve the Bethel Park community, and we truly felt honored to have him here. Never one to back down from a challenge, he immediately rolled up his sleeves and got to work, building a team and restoring pride to this school district and community. His leadership style was simple, direct, and effective. He treated everyone with warmth and respect, and he supported his staff with his words and his actions. Every decision he made was well-thought-out and based primarily on the best interests of our students, staff, and community. Sitting in this seat to my right, Dr. Knight guided this board through a myriad of challenges. Those of you who have attended our board meetings during Dr. Knight's tenure or watched them on television had a chance to witness his steady leadership. While we miss him, we can still feel his presence here.
It is truly fitting that we dedicate this room, of all rooms, to his honor. While the public had an opportunity to interact with Dr. Knight in this room a couple of times a month at board meetings, it was here that he finally did his finest work out of the public eye. Shortly after he was hired, he gathered the administrators in this room and began to shape us into a cohesive team. And within months, he filled the vacancies he had on his administrative staff and completed his team. His greatest gift to all of us was his faith in our abilities, which helped us to believe in ourselves, learn to share our talents with one another, and to work as a cohesive group. Mrs. Cook is correct.
We still very much feel his presence. Thank you. This evening, we are pleased, sorry, to welcome his family, and at this time, we'd like to introduce them. We welcome Dr. Knight's wife Nancy, his son Tom, his mother-in-law Aloha Brown, his sisters Joyce, I'm sorry, Nancy's sisters Joyce Brown, Sharon Horner, and Carol Huber, and their husbands John Brown, Sam Horner, and Brett Huber. Mrs. Knight's sister Mary McCrory is also here with Doc's great friend Rico Capana. We're sorry that Dr. Knight's parents and his sister Dawn and her family were unable to be with us this evening, but please let them know how much we think about them. Thank you for sharing this evening with us.
Those of you who are regular visitors to our meetings will also notice some improvements to the community room. Our facilities department spent a great amount of time in here this summer painting and installing new carpeting. And our friends at PEMCO were kind enough to donate the new tables, chairs, and bookshelves for the room. We hope our audience finds the new chairs more comfortable than the old plastic ones. At this time, I would like to thank Joy Shaughnessy, who is here this evening with, who is here with us this evening, as well as Gary Egger, Brian McGahy, and Angela Gray from PEMCO for their generous donation in Dr. Knight's memory. It's greatly appreciated, and this donation has an extra-special meaning to all of us since PEMCO is a Bethel Park-based company as well. At this time, I would like Joy to come forward and accept a certificate of appreciation from the school district. Before we officially dedicate the room in Dr. Knight's memory, I would like to direct your attention to the video screen for a brief tribute to our friend. I just have to get on Vicki for one thing she left out of that, and I wore my West Virginia pin, because Doc and I were the only West Virginia guys in the office, and I knew she wouldn't put anything West Virginia in that presentation. Beautiful. What a friend he was. At this time, I would like to ask Tommy and Nancy if they will join us over here. We're going to do the official dedication.
I don't know how well I'll do with this, but I think everybody, for all your love and your concern for Tom, he loved his school district. He was so proud of the school board, and the staff, and the students. He was so happy to come into work every day. He just loved this school district. And more than anything, Tom just wanted to make everything right for the district and for the students. And my family thanks you so much for everything that you have done for us. I truly, truly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not a whole much more, a whole much more than that, but we appreciate everybody that donated the furniture and helped get this room together. So, as Mom had said, we appreciate all the support that we've had thus far, and we know that if we need anything, you guys are there. So, we appreciate that, and thank you.
Thank you so much.
And Tommy, your daughter Ella will be starting kindergarten in four years, four and a half, in the Bethel Park School District.
Dr. Knight accomplished many things in his six short years with the Bethel Park School District. None more lasting than his leadership in making the new Bethel Park High School a reality. Without his vision, wisdom, and tenacity to stay the course, this project might still be on the drawing board instead of drawing to its near-completion. And I'm not going to get through this all. I'm pleased to announce that it is the district's intention to dedicate the new Bethel Park High School in Dr. Knight's memory when we officially dedicate that high school sometime in February 2012. And we look forward to welcoming the Knight family back again when we have that presentation ceremony. Thank you again to the Knight family for sharing Doc with us. Thank you to our friends at PEMCO for their generous donation to beautify our newly-renamed Thomas A. Knight Community Room. Now we'll return to our regularly-scheduled agenda. I need an intent-to-adopt agenda for business item.
Second.
All in favor?
Opposed.
That carries nine to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 29th, 2011.
Same move.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries nine to zero. I need to announce executive sessions held October 18th for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information, and October 27th for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Staff report, are we foregoing that, or are we doing a staff report tonight? I think we should. Student government. Do you want, do you want to do student report? Oh, we're going to do staff reports? Okay.
Okay. The 2011-12 school year is in full swing, and I'm happy to share the following good news items with you this evening. I'm pleased to announce that three of our seniors have been named commended students by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation. Congratulations to Nicholas Poe, Marla Vaughn, and Trevor Walter, who are among the top 50,000 scorers on the PSAT test, which they took as juniors, this scholar, which they took as juniors to enter the scholarship program. I'm also pleased to announce that 15 Bethel Park High School students were named Advanced Placement Scholars in recognition of their high scores on the AP exams, which they took last spring. Students who score high enough on AP exams are eligible to earn college credit, advanced placement, or both. Approximately 18% of the 1.8 million students worldwide who take AP exams earn this distinction. Congratulations go to 2011 graduate Justin Fleishman, who was named a National AP Scholar for earning a score four or higher on eight AP exams. 2011 graduates Joseph Brucker, Nathan Enick, Jacob Machowski, Henry Pesor, Manasiravi, and Sean Walsh were named AP Scholars of Distinction for earning scores of three or higher on four or more exams, with an average score of 3.5. 2011 graduate Aaron Cherson was named an AP Scholar with honors for receiving scores of three or higher on four or more exams, with an average score of 3.25. Congratulations also go to our AP Scholars. 2011 graduates, graduates Megan Crawford, Spencer Kuhn, Jing Jing Lee, and seniors Jimmy Dykstra, Nicholas Poe, and Patrick Shurl, and junior Shankar Athanarian for receiving scores of three or higher on three or more exams. AP exams are administered to students who take the AP courses offered at Bethel Park High School. We're proud of these students' accomplishments and the efforts of the teachers who prepare them. Eleven of our high school juniors successfully applied and were accepted to the Westinghouse Science Honors Institute. Congratulations to Katherine Brooks, Juliana Bookwald, Matt Enos, Rebecca Hoffman, Vincent Mamon, Caitlin Michael, Haley Prowell, Divya Raghu, Daniel Snyder, Rachel Taylor, and Rachel Wida. This program, now in its 55th year, provides opportunities for students who demonstrate a strong interest in science and engineering to network with professionals through a series of 10 lectures and a trip to Penn State to tour the university's nuclear reactor. We appreciate the encouragement of our science, that our science staff provides for our students to apply for this program. Twenty-six of our high school students will also have the opportunity to get hands-on career exploration experience through apprenticeship programs offered through the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. These students participated in a rigorous application process to earn the opportunity to spend at least one day a month working with professionals in their workplaces, exploring careers such as nursing, acting, engineering, and advertising. Congratulations to Sarah Albert, Melissa Barnes, Amanda Beck, Holly Brugman, Madeline Carruthers, Jared Single, Krista Colarosa, Mandy Daven, Alyssa Debski, James Dykstra, Ally Gemaria, Shannon Good, Morgan Guarino, Erin Hayduck, Courtney Hatfield, Ally Mater, Johanna Maloney, Gracie Moody, Valerie Potus, Anna Rigatti, Emily Robinson, Molly Smith, Hannah Snyder, Samantha Tar, Doug Faes, and Tara Williams. Three Bethel Park High School musicians successfully auditioned and will play in the PMEA Honors Orchestra Concert for the second consecutive year. Congratulations to Stephen Barnhart, Alex Curtis, and Jordan Todd. Five of our high school musicians will represent Bethel Park High School in the upcoming PMEA Honors Band Concert. Congratulations to Joe Beaver, Travis Butler, Mark Debski, Jimmy Dykstra, and Audrey Miller. I'm proud to note that Travis, Mark, and Jimmy earned first chair in their respective sections. Bethel Park High School senior Kelsey Baxter is a recent graduate from Cornell's University Summer College Program. Kelsey spent three weeks this past summer at Cornell experiencing what it is like to live and learn at an Ivy League university, where she took official university courses in veterinary medicine, small animals practice. Her experience earned her college credits. Two of our middle school students recently earned some well-deserved recognitions as well. Independence Middle School 7th grader Tyler Smith received a certificate from an organization called Challenge by Choice in Bridgeville. Tyler spent five weeks last summer as a counselor in training, working with special-needs children. Neil Armstrong Middle School 6th grader Ryan Cook wrote a review of the book Out of My Mind, which has been selected to be published in the January issue of Storyworks Magazine. Ryan wrote this review last year as a 5th grader at Neil Armstrong. William Penn 1st graders were interviewed for the McDonald Steelers Kid Zone Television Show. The students were asked some really tough questions about the Steelers and football in general, including the tricky "how many minutes are in a two-minute warning?" But they did a great job showing their knowledge of the black and gold. The segment with Mrs. Williams' class aired on October 23rd, but you can catch Mrs. Joseph's class on Sunday, October 30th, at 10:30 a.m. on Pittsburgh's CW, Channel 22. The Allegheny County Health Department recently concluded its fall inspections, and I'm happy and relieved to report that not only did all Bethel Park School cafeterias pass the inspections, but they also received Black Diamond Awards, which are the highest awards bestowed by the Health Department. These awards are given only to those facilities which demonstrate exceptional food handling and sanitation practices. The Neil Armstrong Cafeteria led the charge with 11 Black Diamonds, followed by Memorial with seven, Independence, Franklin, Washington, and Penn with six, and the High School and Lincoln with five Black Diamonds each. Congratulations to Food Service Director Joe Consolmagnow and his hard-working cafeteria staff for those well-deserved recognitions. And that concludes the report for this evening. Next month, I will be sharing the results of our PSSA scores for 2011. I'm happy to report, though, that all of our schools made AYP this past year. Next month, we will be breaking the scores down by grade level and subject and take a look at how our, how our students have progressed throughout the years on these tests. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Now, student government.
Okay, right now, we're working with our charity for the year, and our charity for the year is Compassions Water for Life. It provides water filters for countries, and I think it's mainly in Africa. And we raised $300 at the Powderpuff Football Game, and it provides six water filters for different communities there, so we're really proud about that, we were able to raise so much money. And right now, we're working with the freshman class elections. They're coming up in two weeks, that they are, through ways and means, they will be having the election, sorry. We are going to our state conference November 10th, 11th, and 12th, and we're really excited about that, because six of our students are presenting three workshops on leadership. And we are also working on a table tennis tournament to have in the gym soon. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. PTA, PTO council?
Good evening. I'm Kelly L. Benzie, representing the PTOs this evening. All of our open houses went off phenomenally this year, and we had great progress working with Dr. Knight in all the redistricting, and saw all the fruits of that hard work this fall with all the new students, and that was very exciting. And even though we've had a short few months already, some of our schools have started some great service projects. William Penn had their Fall Festival and collected macaroni and cheese for Shim, and Washington will continue for their fifth year to collect Halloween candy to donate to Washington Mission. And we, as the PTO council, are very sad with the news of Dr. Knight, and we were very honored to also work with him. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Solicitor's report.
I have a written report to submit to the board.
Thank you. No committee reports? Public comments on agenda items. Agenda items only. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing none, we'll move into business items. Curriculum Committee and Mr. Spukuzo.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Seeing two items, would anyone like any of the items held out separately? If not, I will move the following two items. Item number one, the 2011-12 school calendar revisions. January 25th was Teacher in Service Day, is now Teacher Records Day. January 27th was a Teacher Records Day, now Clerical Day. February 20th, No School, Snow Make-Up Day. June 19th, Cancel and Service. Item two is school-sponsored overnight educational activities, first being Item A, High School Music Department Field Trip 2011-12. Item B, the 75th Pennsylvania Association of Student Council State Conference, Altoona, Pennsylvania, November 10th through 12th, 2011.
Second. Items one and two under Curriculum Committee have been moved by Ms. Items one and two under Curriculum Committee have been moved by Mr. Spicuzza and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on any of these items? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Personnel Committee and Mrs. Rule.
There are eight items under Personnel. Are there anyone, any, that anyone wishes to hold out? If not, I move that we approve item one, which is approval of substitutes. Item two, approval of extra-duty responsibility program. Item three, approval of leaves of absence. Four, change of leave of absence return date. Five, acceptance of resignation. Six, approval of staffing change. Seven, appointment of personnel. And eight, approval to submit petition.
Need a second? Items one through eight under Personnel have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Any discussion on any of these items?
Mrs. Cook?
Mr. Sustage?
At this time, would like to table item 7b2.
Okay, I have a table motion and a second to table item 7b2. Any discussion? There is no discussion on a table item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That table carries nine to zero. So I am now back to the original motion minus 7b.
I'd like to just make a comment on number six.
Yes.
Number six, A, when we, when we talk about opening the following positions, Principal Director for Cyber and Alternative Learning Options, just want to make a comment that I, I, I think it's the right move. We are now losing in effect approximately $600,000 a year because we're not receiving state subsidies for students who are leaving our school district and attending alternate programs, and this, in effect, is opening up this position so we can try to entice some of those students back in. So I just wanted to comment on that, let you know in favor of that entirely.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions or comments on personnel items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Facilities and Services Committee and Mr. Sustage?
There are two items under Facilities and Services. Would anybody like any items held out? Hearing none, I'd like to move the following items. One, approval for the sale of district items, and that would be the sale of school buses to Sully Motors in the amount of $3,004, and to Church Bus Supply in the amount of $4,075. I have number two is approval of change order for the high school project, and these were discussed in detail at the committee meeting last week. They are change order GC034 to Muscaro Construction in the amount of $90,154.60, and change order TE008 to Westmoreland Electric in the amount of $1,748.44. Second.
Thank you. Items one and two under Facilities and Services Committee have been moved by Mr. Sustage and seconded by Mr. Rose. Any discussion on these items?
Just like to make one comment.
Yes, sir.
Under the $90,000 change order to Muscaro, so everybody's aware, seventy-eight, almost $79,000, $78,707 was due to undercutting changes at Church Road, where we widened Church Road to enable the left turn and the right turn lanes at the entrance of the school. So most of that change order is related directly to the widening of that roadway.
Thank you.
And it's something that was required by the municipality?
Required by the municipal, municipality under the plan and was not, not included in the original budget, not original budgets. It was undercutting and-
They didn't realize until they-
A deficient, deficient submaterial on the hillside there.
And that was done, a traffic study was done, required by the municipality in order for us to build the new high school. Any other discussion on these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Finance Committee and Mr. Rose?
There are seven items under the Finance Committee, excuse me, tonight. Anybody like any of them held out separately?
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Yeah, item number seven, please.
Number seven?
Yes, please.
Any others? Then I move the following items. Number one, October 2011, salaries and bills. Number two, September 2011, financial report. Number three, budgetary transfers. Number four, fuel contract with the AIU. Number five, purchase of equipment for the music tech lab and studio for the new high school. Number six, approval of network engineering and technology consultant. I move the approval.
Second? Items one through six under Finance Committee have been moved by Mr. Rose and seconded by Mr. Sustage. Any questions or comments on these items?
Mrs. Cook?
Yes, sir.
I guess my question is best directed to our wise counsel, Mr. Malo. I'm a client of Brentwood Bank.
Okay, we're not on that, we held that out.
I'll do that next.
He's going to do that next. We're on one through six, one through six, right now.
I'm sorry.
One through six. Any questions on one through six? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Mr. Rose?
I move the approval of bank depository, approve Brentwood Bank as a bank depository for the Bethel Park School District.
Second?
I think it's nice that we went with the local bank headquartered here in Bethel.
I, I just, just wanted to ask that question as, as a client of Brentwood Bank.
No, that, that-
I think most of us are clients of Brentwood.
Unless, it's the minimus, unless, let's say you were a majority shareholder or officer in the bank, or you deposited about 90% of the deposits. The Ethics Code would allow you to vote on it.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions on item seven, the appointment of Brentwood Bank?
I'm abstaining on item seven.
If I may, Mrs. Cook, just to affirm Mrs. Rule's comments, Brentwood Bank is a wonderful company and it's a local, locally-owned company. No Mr. Bailey, he's a, he's a, he's a good man and a, and a good manager of our assets, I'm sure, so.
Yes, and I wanted to recognize that in our audience tonight is Mr. Bailey and Mr. Kinlan from Brentwood Bank. And now, let's vote on it to make it official. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And one abstention, so I have eight, oh, with one abstention as Mr. Puhatch. And likewise, as my fellow board members have said, we are really thrilled that we are going to be dealing with a neighborhood, local bank that most of us deal with anyway, but that our school district now is going to be dealing with. Thank you. We have a discussion item on other, under other, a discussion-only item of our daycare transportation plan. We have spoken of this numerous times in the past and said we would be definitely changing our, this year, and we're trying to get it enacted early enough so that we are not impacting our families in any negative way, and Mr. Howard, would you like to take the floor on this one?
I, I think the board is aware that in the, during the 10-11 budget process, we had brought up the elimination of the daycare runs throughout the, throughout the district and recommended that we bring that back to locally and through only the attendance zones of the local elementary schools only. When we presented that, that was a little late in the process, and it was inconvenient for the parents to make the adjustments that they would need to make. So as part of some of the redistricting conversations, we, we said that we would have a presentation and tried to implement this in the fall of 2011. So we once again are asking the board and administration is recommending that we, we proceed with the elimination of the daycare runs throughout the district and only offer that to the daycares within the individual elementary schools only. Well, we, we have passed out the preliminary presentation to the board for their review, and we would also like to post this on the website so parents will have notification of what daycare runs, what daycares will be associated with what elementary schools.
And just one clarification, it's fall of 2012.
Yes.
Beginning of next school year.
Yes, this will start in the 12, 13 school year.
12, 13 school year. And we are basically staying within attendance areas.
So if your daycare falls within your individual elementary school's attendance zone, we will transport to that daycare, but if it falls without that, without, if it falls outside that zone, then we will not transport to that daycare.
What is the board's pleasure on a vote on this item?
I think it should be in the November meeting agenda. That gives the public a chance to react to it before we officially adopt it, but we need to do it ahead, early in the year so that people will know what's going on.
Okay, so the board would want to take an official action on this as opposed to it being just a procedural?
I, I think we should.
Agree.
Okay, so we're going to post that on the website ASAP, and then we will put that on the agenda for our November. Our November is a combined meeting, so we can have some discussion during the committee meeting portion, and then we'll vote on it, enact, on the, in the voting portion. Very good. We're to public comments on anything you wish to address the board about. Again, comments, no questions and answers session, but come to the microphone and give us your comments.
And the Boardly Ashland Drive. I just want to make sure I understand about this undercut of Church Road. This was initially put out for a bid, and now we're finding that we, out of the change orders, we need an additional $78,000. Is this because there was something underneath the road that wasn't taken into account when the bidding was originally put out, similar to all the other problems we have with what's under the ground? Is that, oh, I'm not allowed to ask questions?
I think Mr. Howard could address that after the meeting, or do you feel like you want to address it now? After the meeting? Yeah.
Well, I just wonder, because at the last public meeting and at this public meeting, the board has gone out of their way to specify that this was a requirement of the municipality. I think this was a requirement of the municipality long before the bids went out. We were all aware that Church Road was going to be widened, and to continually say, it's not what we wanted, it's what they wanted, just seems a little small at this point in the game, and the fact that we are once again putting so many thousands of dollars into a change order, I just don't know why we didn't know more about what was underneath the ground before we started. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, my name's Dana McCloskey. I'm a resident of 5038 Gardenville Road. I'm here as a representative of the Bethel Park Music Advocacy Group. We'd like to start dialoguing with you and working with you to not only restore the third grade strings program, to, but to enhance our music education, to include younger grades at the elementary school. I will be scheduling or requesting meetings as we pull our information together. Thank you.
Hi, Jim Main, South Park Road. I'm glad to hear you're going to be talking about the PSA, PSSA test next week. I was looking at them, and I was somewhat concerned because looking at the math scores, the students at the lower levels, 50, 60%, are scoring at the highest level in mathematics. And by the time they get to 11th grade, that's dropped down to about 11, 30%. The other thing is the people who don't pass a basic requirement for math, that's 1% or 2% at the lower levels, and that raises up to about 8% at the higher levels, so I hope that's addressed next week.
Brenda Paisor, Rappahoe Road. I also wanted to address test scores, but I wish to express my disappointment in that only 15 AP scholars were recognized from Bethel Park this year. Not to minimize the accomplishments of those students, no, in fact, I believe those students had to work harder to achieve their success than past students have, but to recognize this as another negative impact caused by last year's strike. The previous year, we recognized 22 AP students. Over and over, parents have been told that strikes do not affect education. The heck they don't. This is one clearly measurable way students were impacted last year. We had more students taking fewer exams last year, and here is the outcome. I would hope that administration takes the time to look at the number of students testing in each course and the level of scores attained. AP exams are scheduled by the College Board and occur on specific dates nationally, regardless of an individual school's calendar. Bethel Park students were allowed to schedule so-called late exams due to the extenuating circumstances caused by the strike. That gave them a likelihood of five to 10 days extra to catch up for the six-week strike. Very little help. Some of these late exams fell on the day of prom, hardly a bonus for our seniors. To my knowledge, only one teacher gave her classes a useful assignment to be completed during the walkout so that they would not fall behind. I will not name the teacher nor the classes, I do not want to put the individual in a precarious position, but I do extend my thanks to that individual for making the effort to help the students. In another course, a very challenging reading assignment was given to the students, and printouts were given out prior to the strike. While the assignment was given, the assignment that was given is an approved piece of literature for the coursework, it was not a past practice in Bethel Park to teach on that particular piece. When the students returned to class, the assignment was summarily brushed off with the comment, "I'm sure the administrators discussed it with you in senior school." You would think in the time that the teachers spent picketing the seniors and even moving to the student parking lot, that they might have picked up on what was actually going on in senior school.
Mrs. Paisor, if you could wrap up?
I will. They would at least have the knowledge that one must have certification to teach an AP class. I have some questions that I will provide to administration that I would appreciate if the board and administration would look into how our AP courses are being taught every year, not just during a strike year. There's, there are many benefits to students to be able to take these classes and to be able to take and pass the exams, and I would hope that next year we'll see a much higher number. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Sanita Potochek, Mapleview Drive. Lady and gentlemen of the board, did you see the Post Gazette paper today where Bethel Park High School is now, will be 91 million plus? I thought we were told it wouldn't go a dime over 81 million. A lot of people are talking about that and kind of dismayed that we could be that far off. We've sat here at meetings and heard change orders. I think you ought to get tough the rest of the way. Big job is yet to come, and I think you ought to sharpen your pencils because that's kind of a far-off estimate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move to board comments and Mr. Amadis.
Okay, first of all, other than the obvious congratulations that I wanted to give to all the students, past and present, for all their achievements in Bethel Park, I wanted to just announce that on the 21st of October, our superintendent was asked to give some testimony to a public hearing by our state representatives, Math Smith and Dan Deasy. I was provided the comments that she gave at that time, and I'm, I am just very impressed with what she had to say. It was about the budget and the effects of the budget impact that the state has had on our local district. She will be posting those comments, and they, they will be posted on our website, and I would encourage everybody, if they're curious as to what she had to say and the effects of the budget cuts on a district, to go check them out on the, on the local site.
Thank you. Mr. Puhatch?
Yeah, this evening's dedication certainly made me reflect back on, on the memories of Dr. Knight. I've had the, the joy and privilege of encountering multiple exemplary individuals through my experiences, and Dr. Knight certainly fit in that category. And each time that I do encounter an individual like that, I'm, I'm at first stunned and just want to sit back and watch them and, and sort of bask in their glow. But once you get past that, I, I've always done anything I can to make sure that I take away something that I can add to my own character through my interaction with them. And, you know, the, the job of running a district and certainly being on a school board is challenging at times, and some of those challenges sometimes get the best of us. In one of those moments, I found myself talking to Dr. Knight aside and asked him, "How do you stay so calm and focused?" And he said to me, "John, when you do the right thing for the right reason, it's easy to." And that display of grace is what I will always take away from my, my experience of Dr. Knight. I haven't perfected it yet, but I find myself working on it every day.
Thank you, Mr. Puhatch. Mr. Schubel?
Yeah, quick, quick story about Dr. Knight. I, I so admire him, and I consider him a friend, and, and I, I liked him because he had the same sense of humor that I have. When I was newly elected in 2005, or newly appointed, I should say, 2005, he was newly anointed in the same timeframe, we were discussing, you know, my humble kid from Carnegie, a solid C student on the school board- school board, and he mentioned he was a solid C student from Washington County, and he said, "Chuck, don't worry about it." He said, "There's only, there's only two requirements that count." And I said, "Doc, what's that?" He said, "Well, these superintendent, all you have to do is be able to count to five." And he said, "To be on the school board, the only thing, you can't be a convicted felon." His sense of humor was just, it was just great, just, just good stuff. Quick shout out also to all our fall sports kids, particularly our soccer team, who did very well. A big shout out to Coach Galliotta. If you knew that group of kids, it was sort of a, he thought it was going to be a rebuilding year. Those kids overachieved by every measure and had a great year. And also, comment about Officer Modrak's appointment. He fled the room and wanted to say this in front of them. I so admire that man, he's a wonderful person. I'm sorry, is he still here? Or he left?
He left.
Okay. It's just a wonderful thing that we've done. He does so much work behind the scenes that we don't see with respect to involvement with kids and family and, and stuff that you really, I really can't discuss. It's more, he's more than just a police officer walking the halls. He does a wonderful job, and, and I'm glad to be part of the team moving forward, so thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rule?
I have a couple comments. One is that I understand the ninth graders had a nice tour of Steel Center, and even the students that were gearing themselves toward the college arena enjoyed the visit. And if anything, it does broaden their perspectives at the right age to be thinking about different options that they might pursue. The other thing I would like to say is that the cosmetology courses that they've been offering at the school, they now expanded the course to include specialized areas. So now a student goes to cosmetology class here at the high school, you know, they take it at Steel Center, they can now go back in the evening and get their specialized certificates, even up to a manager's certificate at the student rate. That is really, let me tell you, I paid the full rate for cosmetology, and you would just get a bonus if you have a student that has that interest of sending them through these technical schools. The other thing is that I attended a Shasta meeting tonight, and we had a very interesting speaker. He was from the ACLU, ACLU, and he spoke about the various cases that have come before them from school districts, and it was really very revealing, very good speaker.
Thank you. Mr. Rose?
Just briefly, just, we lost, we had a super superintendent, and I've been here long enough to work with a lot of, but Tom Knight was truly a friend. He was a friend of Bethel Park, and I consider him a friend of mine and will always miss him, but it was a great thing to do tonight to name this room for that man.
Thank you. Mr. Sustage?
It's no different. All I can say is, I know that Dr. Knight is up there looking down at us now and wishing everybody in here the best, and it was a loss, and will continue to be a loss, which is going to hurt for a long time, at least for me personally, so.
Thank you. Mrs. Buckley?
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. I have two comments. I'd like to add on to Mr. Amadis's comments about the hearing that was held on Friday. I want to thank Mrs. Rose for doing such a fine job in her presentation. I was there in the audience, there were five panels, and it was very enlightening to hear what the folks said. There were superintendents there, there were parents invited, and it was, it was time well spent. And also, the presentation tonight, I'd like to thank Mrs. Flota, you did a fine job. I'm glad you included Doc with his letter of people in there, that was very special to me. And for those of you who don't know, Doc and I went to college together, so we've lost a good friend. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Spicuzza?
See, it's really difficult being the last.
You complain either way, I get it.
But, but I'm okay with that. No, no, I, I, this is kind of the good seat on the board because it's kind of off camera, so to say, you know, so I like that. There's now a disadvantage, though, because I have someone looking over my shoulder.
Yep.
And, and I count that as a good thing, actually. And, you know, I, everyone knows, and I know we're all up here, and we're having a hard time with this, and I'm not going to expound on it, I think we, you know how we feel. I'd like to also piggyback on Chuck's comments, that they did win, the soccer, boys, men's soccer won their playoff game on Monday, and they're playing, I guess, as we speak.
Yeah, that's right.
So.
Peter's talking.
It wasn't on, no, come on. I went to read the paper tomorrow. But that's all I have tonight, thank you.
Well, I'm just going to end with telling everyone, I'm so darn proud of this board. I'm proud to be a member of this board, I'm proud of what you all do, I'm proud of carrying on Dr. Knight's legacy, I'm proud of our administrative team and what they are doing in carrying on that legacy and supporting this board. You guys are great. I need a motion to adjourn.
Move adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.